Does she need me to send it to her?
Um, she's on her way.
We're ready to go.
All right, I'm gonna call this a special session to the order. This is a special session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, County Proche, State of Arizona, being held on Tuesday, August 3rd at 5:08 PM at the council chambers located here, 915 Perfectville Road, Bisbee, Arizona, 603.
Councilmember Louis Pollak.
Here.
Councilmember Joni Giacchino.
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Council or Mayor Proton Atticline will be joining us shortly. City staff, Steven Pocken, City Manager, Ashley Coronado, City Clerk, Jesus Haro, Public Works Director, Alberti Chavet, Police Chief, Joestus, City Attorney.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. This will be an interview process for the board two candidate. The way we're going to do this is each one of us will ask one question of each candidate, and all will be the same questions, so no one gets, you know, in doubt, something different. We would like to do this, each one about more than like 20 minutes, so if you can hold your answers to three minutes or under, I don't think we need the time. You wouldn't necessarily have to start it along. And then at the very end, I'll give you a couple of minutes for any closing remarks or any questions you have of us. So that's the process. And so first person that I'm gonna call will email to the stand, and then the rest of you, if you can wait, and then we'll bring you in as. Excuse you now. Well, hi.
Hi, hi.
Well, I'm out. I'll start it off. Mayor, if I could just tell the admonition real quick. I'll only do it once.
Okay.
For the council, there's an admonition that'll be there for second sessions. The open meeting law requires an admonition of confidentiality to give. Discussions in executive session are confidential except by members of the council. Two employees discuss persons to ARS Section 38, 431, O1A1. Three, the auditor general in connection with the audit. And four, the attorney general, the county attorney, doing an investigation. So have that executive session after the interview with everybody.
Okay.
If you want to wait to find the results, then we'll call you all back.
No, you've been on this call.
We appreciate it if you would stick around, actually, because you might just wait a minute and take a seat. All right. Well, as you know, Bisbee is a small town, and our citizens expect their public officials to be available and accessible to them. How would you interact with the citizens and the media? What would be your day-to-day interaction style with the citizens?
Well, having been here for the past six years, most of you know me. I own a business in all these big companies people there got. And basically, I've been doing this all along. So it has somehow has given me some advantage. I interact with the citizen, with the residents on a daily basis. It has given me some insights into what's going on in Bisbee. And that's basically why I made this decision to go into this position. I believe with my background, with my experience, having over the past six years been in Bisbee, listened and talked to the residents of Bisbee, gives me insights into what I can be of assistance. So basically, to be on a daily basis, I'll somehow, if I find time, I'll go out and maybe do more interaction. I've had this access, so maybe I'm at an advantage right now to go to my business in Bisbee. But I'll definitely make an effort to go above and beyond what I'm doing.
Thank you. I don't think our police chief has had to sit down.
Oh, you know, we're not doing this.
Because we're streaming this, so just let them know. I, yeah, maybe I said everybody have to leave.
They know they don't have to.
Oh.
They know they don't have to.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna skip this client at the moment, so he should be here shortly. And so, thanks.
Okay, well, what do you hope to accomplish as a city councilman?
Okay. I'll just go back. That's one of the reasons I decided to go into this. It was a decision I thought about thoroughly. Like I said, I haven't been here, and I go a long way. So I may just give you a little background, it may be helpful. I came to Bisbee when I was 18 years old, but then to Chi's College. So I go a long way. I joined, I think we had that college together, at Chi's College. We left, and then I fell in love with this town. I believe my background, especially in decision-making, also finance, budgeting. I believe I can bring that experience that will help. Because the way I see it, and basically, I'm not just doing this to be in this position. I'm doing it to make a difference. Having had the exposure, having looked at all the issues that, you know, we have to balance Bisbee. Progress, you have to keep the identity of Bisbee, what makes Bisbee unique. Having been exposed to the outsiders, to the visitors, what's going on. So I totally thought about this, because I believe my background, especially in finance, budgeting, able to make decisions, having been managing several businesses. Also, I can add, I believe I have the ability, the knowledge, and the experience to add to a lot of ideas. And hopefully, I can work with the council to make this be further go into the future. So I definitely have what it takes to make this be a better place to be. I love it, my wife is from here. I mean, this is my, this is home, and I love to give back. And that's, 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 that's one of the reasons I think I'll be of great assistance.
Thank you. Okay. Joni, next.
What do you see your role as councilperson?
Okay, I've done some studies. Okay. Basically, a council person here just is a decision-maker along with the, with the mayor, and basically, we influence policies. We set precedents, we look at committees to see how we can improve the work of Bisbee. We are involved in the budgeting, we basically have to approve budget, we have to approve ordinance, we are pretty much involved in all aspects of this. So as a council person, basically, we are the ones who set the pace for this, for this town, along with the mayor, of course, working with the city manager. So our role is to influence those and come up with ideas. And I don't believe in stagnation. I believe my background allows me to go further, to add something, rather than the status quo. Let's see where we can go from here. So I, we work on ordinance, we work on policies, we work on procedures. We oversee, we oversee what the city manager has to do, I think. We don't interfere in his business, so we'll make those decisions. So this is what the city council does and supposed to do. And hopefully, I can, if I'm asked to do something extra, I would, I would be glad to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you have a lot, just because I'm trying to keep it under three minutes, so.
Leslie, go ahead.
All right. What do you see as the biggest challenges facing Bisbee? And do you have any preliminary ideas for addressing these challenges?
Yes. I do see, I mean, it's a small town that's trying to balance what Bisbee ought to be, what, and what we need to do. And we have to balance those things. Progress versus keeping the status quo, keeping this be what makes you. The reason that a lot of people come to Bisbee, uniqueness, having been, having the exposure to visitors, talking to them on a daily basis, having talked into the residents of Bisbee on a daily basis. I think the biggest, what I can contribute here, how we can keep this be yet, add to the progress of this be. Look at ways, for example, if we look at the financial situation, we know we have some, some issues we have to work with. We have the funds that we have to work with, we have the deficit that we're faced with. And I look, I was looking at the financial, I mean, and if I may be, and know this, we have a new city manager, we have a lot. I mean, I don't believe in equalizing, I believe in progression. We can't just say, okay, we receive this amount, therefore, we have to spend it. I believe this, we receive this amount, how we can make it better, and how we can not just balance our budget, but maybe move on and do more things for this be. So I don't believe in just keeping it as it is. I believe I can contribute with some ideas, how we can, we can make it better, we can utilize, because that could do, I was looking at the budgets, for example, it's the same. I mean, you know, we make that much spending, therefore, let's see, let's, let's think outside of the box, and see. So this would be my role. I think I can be of help, I can be a soundboard to look at those, and I can use my experience. Haven't had work in the private sector for many years, not only work as an employee. I've run companies, I've managed a lot of entities. So I think I can be of help to the city council when it comes to that specific. And that's a good question, by the way. Yeah?
Thank you.
Yeah?
That was mine.
No, I, I, that was, that was a great question.
All right. Lou, your turn.
Mr. Stone.
Yes, sir. Yes, yes, I don't even know how to pronounce it, so whatever.
What do you think the city of Bisbee could do with this involved?
Oh, wow, that's a good question, too. You know, still, you know, like I said, my wife was born here, she was raised here. She always looked at the building that was iconic building that we have to. I think we need to look back, try to rebuild this, try to come up and re, rebuild that building. Because, as I said, that makes this be unique, all those buildings, all the history of this be. And to just let it, keep it, and then we have to find ways. I mean, I look at this, we have the insurance, insurance money we spend in, we say, oh, we consider that as, 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 as money to be spent. I think we need to look at this and see if we can go back, and maybe we can do it smart, smart. We can look at this, how we can do it by minimum cost and preserve that history, that, that part of history that should be preserved. So I think we really need to revisit this, of course, along with everyone else, and I think this is very important. That's what makes this be. I talk to people every day, I talk to tourists every day. I love this be, I love the way it's made, and we need to go back and revisit this, not just let it sit. So this is what I would be my, my answer to that.
If you were a first council.
I apologize for being late. Been a heck of a day. So my question for you is, what challenges and or problems do you feel are most concerning currently in the city? And how has your experience prepared you for dealing with these issues?
I think right now, from what I know, from what I see, talking to the residents of this be, I think we have a big, big problem with, with housing, affordable housing. What's happening, we try to balance business, create business environment, bring in the tourists. What has happened over the past couple of years is we had a big influx of people who bought homes here, so left a big part of this community without access to homes, without access. And I think what's gonna happen, to be honest with you, it's gonna affect the business in the long run, because these businesses that provide to tourists need employees, they need workers. And what's happening now, based on my experience, what, based on what I see every day, these people had no place to live, so they end up living in town. So this is one of the biggest challenges, I don't have an answer for, but it's something that we have to look at, see how we can balance keeping this, this be progressing, because we need those tax dollars. We should just have to be honest, we need the tax dollars versus we need to keep it at the integrity of the town and the employees. So my, 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 my concern about this here, businesses now are suffering, and I know a couple of businesses, the reason they're suffering, they don't have employees. The reason not to employees, some of those employees don't have, they don't have access to housing. So this is one of the biggest challenges that this be has. I have not done studies, but I know we can tackle it, we can look at it, and see where we can go from here. I mean, it's, it's gonna be, I, I don't know what laws can be enacted, or what procedure we have to do, but I think we need to talk about it. I don't have the answer right now. But definitely, this will be something that I will make sure is brought up and talked about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, that's one from each of us. I do wanna give you a chance for any observations or closer remarks, or any questions you have of us. Have anything?
First, I want to thank you guys. I really, I wanna thank the city, the council, the mayor, and all the employees for giving me this opportunity. I cannot take this decision lightly. I am very busy, I have a lot to do, but I felt that's something I can, I can help with. The city has been good to me. I started a business six years ago, and I've done very well. And I felt it was time for me to get back to the city. I have, I'm not the smartest guy, but I have some knowledge, have some experience. I have a thoughtful process that I can think can be of help, that can contribute to the city of this be. And I wanna thank you, I have my roots goes back a long way. The first town I ever saw when I came to the United States, I was 18 years old, was this be. We came up night to Tucson, I took the Greyhound, no, I was supposed to take the Greyhound bus, but I was so scared, ended up taking a cab. And he brought us all there, and you know, it was nighttime, so we ended up stopping in Bisbee, and this was the first town, the first city I saw in this country, and I fell in love with this town. I married a Visboian, or Visberian, and for over four years, four years I've been married to this thing lady, so you know, I have, I have my roots. And I would like to get back, that's the only reason I'm doing it, nothing else. And I thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you for flying.
Thank you.
It takes, takes something to.
It does, it does, believe me, I thought about it, so it does. But I, I, I want to do something.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Last, Larry coming next, Larry Stone.
Larry Stone?
Yeah.
I couldn't wait, you have my phone number, so I'll just, you know.
Hang around if you don't have it, take more.
Go, go, go and eat something, I know.
You don't want some back though.
Okay, thank you, guys, see you later. Bye.
I think truly.
Thank you. Mr. Stone, Larry Stone, and what we will have here is a question for each one of us, like I said, and welcome. So we will start off with me, I guess. I'll let you know that as a small town, you know, our citizens expect that our public officials will be available to access them whenever they need. How would you interact with the citizens and the media, they'll be calling you? And what would be your day-to-day interaction style with those citizens?
Well, I like to think of my style as being open and congenial. And oftentimes, groups like this have a spokesperson that speaks for the media. I'm not sure that we all need to give our opinions, I'd be a little bit hesitant to share all of my thoughts with the media, they would call me. And I just open and genie.
Okay, thank you. Hannah.
Mr. Stone, what challenges and or problems do you feel are most concerning currently in the city? And how has your experience prepared you for dealing with these issues?
Well, for a couple of years now, there's been a lot of talk about how the city of Bisbee really doesn't have enough money to meet all of the goals and strategic plans. And I think it's important to use all of the community resources to get together to actualize the plans and goals of the leadership team. I think it's that public safety retirement system that's draining our progress right now, and I think we have to find a way to deal with that. There was a great article in Sierra Springs Herald Tribune on Sunday about how many counties and small towns are trying to deal with that. And I think we can learn from our neighbors what the best ideas are to solve that problem without necessarily reinventing wheel ourselves.
Thank you. Frank, next. What do you hope to accomplish at the city council?
Well, I think it's important that we all work together as a team, and as a team, we can often accomplish much more than we can individually. And I think it's important to lay out a strategic plan, and some short-term goals to measure our progress toward the strategic plan. And I have a good imagination and I'm very creative, and I think I can offer that to the city council, maybe thinking outside the box a little bit, which is very popular in Bisbee, and maybe come to some working solutions for things that have been impacts up until now.
Thank you. Joni?
What do you see your role as councilperson?
Well, we enact laws for the ordinances for the city of Bisbee, and we provide leadership for the city of Bisbee. I think it's very important to represent your war as a councilperson. I think you have to know what it is that's people in your war are looking for and want. And I think it's important to take action to try to achieve some of the things that the people in your war want to achieve.
Right, Leslie.
And I apologize for the similarity of my question to the councilman. What challenge, what do you see as the biggest challenges facing this be? And do you have any preliminary ideas for addressing these challenges?
Well, as I, again, I apologize for my similarity to the answer to the question, but I, like any complex organization, I think we need to find a way to increase revenues and hold expenses at a minimum. And I haven't really thought that much about what I would do if I was appointed to join the council. But I say, from the outside, it seems as though teamwork would be the solution to any problem that came my way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lou?
Mr. Stone, what do you think you'd have involved?
This is a very sad and unfortunate situation, that didn't really have enough fire insurance when the place burnt up. And I think the die's been cast to, you know, I guess we've been certain, there's a violation to remove the city hall as it stands, it's a threat to public safety, and we need to find a new city hall. There's lots of open space in Bisbee still, for, and Bisbee owns, I guess, quite a few municipal buildings. And so, again, it's something that I haven't thought about a great deal, I don't have a position on it, really. But we need a new city hall, certainly. The working conditions up there, where we have our administrators now, they could use some more room, needs to be bigger. I'm surprised at how much parking the city hall takes up. So we ought to have a limited amount of parking, and more slower feet than we have now, and it's not gonna be in the old building to put down, didn't have enough fire insurance.
All right. One for each of us. Hope that was okay for you. So I wanna give you a chance for closing remarks, any observations, and of course, any questions, any of us, you know, any questions about what this entails. So, and a few minutes for yourself.
Well, I, you know, it's, I walked down to the end of the road down here, and I ran into a nice man who's been living in that nice quiet house for 35 years, and he said, where are you parking? And I said, well, up by the, you know, council building, not down here. He says, good. And he said, you know, don't change, if you get that seat on the council, don't change things too much. The people that have lived here a long time like the way that it's been. And while progress dictates that we move forward, I think it's vitally important to keep the historic essence of Bisbee alive and thriving. And that's why people come to this be, I think. It's a friendly place, we stop when people cross the road, we yield the right of way to the pedestrians, such as that. And it's a really a wonderful place, it's got a wonderful climate, it's got a wonderful energy, and it's got wonderful people. And I think that it's vitally important to preserve that as we move forward and accommodate the changes of the 21st century. I was gonna say how important I thought it was to set strategic goals, I said that now three times. But there's a lack of understanding, I'm afraid, in this be of how the council works and what they produce, the political outputs, if you will. And I think if we made an extra effort to practice those open meeting laws and include the citizens of this be, they'd be less suspicious, if that's what it is, of how things operate, the black box, it's the city council that puts out these political outputs. And what are we gonna do to keep this be the same while we allow this be to go into the 21st century?
Thank you. Yes, well, we will go into executive session after this, if you'd like to stick around, we can call you in after that, and if you can hear, if we have a decision to make, or would like to have you around, get a picture of it. I know the press is here to get pictures.
Oh, well, sure, sure, for the press.
Sorry.
I will say that I am aware of those open meeting laws, and the one thing that I know you can't do in a technical session is to vote.
Oh, we come back and hear it.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's when we get called all back in.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to say I was aware of that.
No, no.
Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Ray.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ray. Ray, yeah, Ray. Welcome. And thank you for replying, and you heard the procedure, it'll be a single question for each one of us.
Yes.
Move a lot pretty, pretty good pace, so I'm sure more of the feedback's coming, but feel free to take as much time to answer as you like, and at the end, I'll give you a chance to come up with something. So first question from myself is, if this is a small town, no, one of the rest here, our citizens expect that our public officials to be available and accessible to them. So how would you interact with the citizens and the media? We will be contacted occasionally. And what would your day-to-day interaction style be with them?
I think that, not only just growing up here at this be, I think my style tends to be very friendly, I'm very open, I listen, and I engage with everybody when I go to the grocery store, see what, that's weird, it is, but.
It'll be worse.
But I, and then I know so many people in your town already, so I need to know more people as, as I interact with them, is definitely something that I'm looking forward to.
Okay, thank you. Hannah.
My question to you is, what challenges and or problems do you feel are most concerning currently in the city? And how has your experience prepared you for dealing with these issues? And how has your experience prepared you for dealing with these issues?
Well, it's my understanding, just looking at budget and reading through it, that there's some concerns regarding the PS PRS. So I understand that there is something that the council will be taking a look at along with the city manager on how to address those concerns. And I also read in the budget that some of the departments and positions have been consolidated in order to help address some of the budgeting issues. And those are good things. I think that when I read through the table regarding numbers and finance and budget, that's one of my strong areas, and I really enjoy numbers. So, you know, maybe there's something that I can help contribute to within that process. And so I'm looking forward to the shout-out.
Thank you. Frank, what do you hope to accomplish at the city council?
I think that, I think over the years that there's been a lot of new people in the town and then there's the people who've grown up here. So I think creating that cohesive environment and seeing both sides and everyone's viewpoint and making sure that people know that there's multiple views. I think creating some kind of cohesiveness is something that I would hope to bring to it, to bring to the table.
Thank you. Joni?
What do you see your role as councilperson?
I'm sorry, Joni.
What do you see your role as councilperson?
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. I've been on different boards, like the Bisbee School Board. And also I was on board when initially with the Boys' Girls Club first came into creation. But as a board member, I think, or a council member, I think it's important to realize that I am one of a total. And also as a superintendent, you know that you're only one of a whole group of people. So it's important to know that your role is as a single person, as a representative of the community, but also that you act as part of the whole board and not just a single individual. So you don't try to go solve the problems of the city on your own. You have a whole council to do that, and you become one as part of a team.
Thank you.
Leslie?
And my question is, mine again, but what do you see as the biggest challenges facing Bisbee? And do you have any preliminary ideas for addressing these challenges?
Well, I think, I think that some of the traditions that we've had in the past, stemming from some of the activities from 4th of July, and some of those have kind of been lost. You know, I think that bringing back some of the traditional activities, being part of, bringing back some of the community ideas and activities is important to making Bisbee what it is and why people are drawn to it in the first place. And again, as part of the council and as a community member, it's important to help facilitate that, to be involved in that. And, you know, take part in it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lou? What do you think should be done with most of the people?
That's so sad. I actually, you know, I actually live the street from it. So I see it, and I really wish that, if at all possible, it could be rebuilt. But given structural integrity and funding, that may not be possible. But I would love to see it rebuilt. I think it's a wonderful building and it had a lot of character.
Thank you. Well, that wasn't too mean. I'm sure you took your looks. So, well, I just want to give you a few moments to make any observations or closing remarks and also ask us any questions, if you have any questions about what you see are your role with us or anything like that. Your time is yours now to close up.
Well, I don't have any further questions. I just wanted to say thank you for allowing me this opportunity to address the council and to be part of this interview. I look forward to hopefully working.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will have two more interviews and we will be in executive session when we come out. We'll make a possible announcement at that point to bring everybody back. And if you want to stay around.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris? Can I come straight to the point?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harris, for applying. We will each ask you one question, take the time you want. We're making very good headway tonight. Don't fight so fast.
Do my best to keep it brief as well.
Well, it's up to you. So I'll lead off. As you know, Bisbee is a small town. And our citizens expect our public officials to be available and accessible to them. How would you interact with the citizens and the media who will be calling you? And what would be your day-to-day interaction style? Style of how would you interact with citizens?
I think interacting with citizens for 30 years, 40 years, I don't think that's changed. It's kind of pointed out. Yeah, I was 18 years in, here's all the text. So I've had plenty of practice in saying interact. And I try to remain always open to anyone. And I think it's always a good practice to listen to the concerned person who wishes to.
Thank you. Pull the mic a little over if you want to make sure the audience is not going to hear you. That'd be great. Anna, go ahead.
Thank you for applying, Mr. Harris. My question to you is, what challenges and or problems do you feel are most concerning currently in the city? And how has your experience prepared you for dealing with these issues?
Well, the problem, I was reviewing the budget and one portion really stuck out. May I read that?
Return.
While Arizona, that's correct. While ASR, as expense has been fairly stationary, the cost of PS PRS, police and fire, has increased. Police and fire combined pension expenses now, in addition, $1 million per year from 15 years ago. Comparing this to the general fund revenue trend chart on page 2 shows that there has been no increase in revenue over the same period of time to cover this growing expense. The exception is some unexpected revenue outliers mentioned on page 2. The general fund balance has been on a downward trajectory. Unless new influx of revenue is found and/or services are cut back, growing expenses ultimately leave the fund balance. In my mind, this is extremely scary. And as I mentioned, you know, I have a purpose account. I do a lot of, I've had positions in management where I've had work with budgets and trying to figure out costs. These are not easy choices that are going to be taken. I would like to think that I have the ability to handle these currents.
Thank you. Frank? What do you hope to accomplish at the city council?
My only goal is really to represent the city and to do the best I can to make sure that we supply with the difficulties that we are confronted. Once again, it's proper stewardship that we, as a council, have.
All right, thank you. Joni?
What do you see your role as a councilperson?
My role is really to work with other members of the council to come up with the best solutions. Were you, Becky, were you thinking about something to take here or?
You know, I, to generalize, I can only ask that, yes, sorry.
To be fair, we don't want to answer that, I mean, what somebody else thought, but to answer it how you are perfect.
I want to just, to be a cooperative and helpful member of the team.
All right.
Thank you.
Leslie?
Well, what do you see as the biggest challenges facing your team to answer? And do you have any preliminary ideas for addressing these challenges?
Well, I don't like to go in with preconceived notions. You're right, but this to me seems to be our biggest challenge. My training, well, it's been as an engineer. And I really do like to make my decisions based on the evidence presented and in the arguments presented. I wish to be persuaded to the best solution based on what we have available to us. And honestly, I would like to think I would be able to bring to the table some ideas that may be perhaps innovative. It is really a process of making the decisions based on part of it.
Thank you. Lou? What do you think should be done with the council?
No, I haven't really decided. I owe you suggestions. I think it goes back to the last question. I'd like to see all the different ideas and all the reports that are surrounding this before I can say I'm, I am at this point, I'm, what would be possible to do. I haven't yet found any suggestions that I found could go in. So I'm maybe this would be the time.
Thank you. All righty, Jeff. I give everybody the opportunity now to make some closing remarks. Make any observations you would like. If your time is yours, or ask us any questions if you have any questions about what you think, your role or whatever. So, your time is yours.
I shouldn't have been making the questions that I might have to you. I'm happy with the way it's in the council. Thank you very much. I'm here for you.
All right. Thank you very much for applying. And know that after this, we'll go into executive session, discuss, and then we'll come out and possibly have a vote, have time. You can hang around. We'll call everybody back in after executive session or whatever you would like.
Right, thank you so much.
Just tell that the public knows that Megan Conley, who also had put in applications on our agenda, has decided to pull her name. So she won't be under consideration. Is that all out there?
She has not arrived yet.
All right. Okay. When are you all finished? Should we proceed into an executive?
I was told she was on her way.
She was. She was on her way. She was in Servista. She said 45 minutes, and that was about, I think, 45 minutes ago.
So I, I didn't know she was, you could contact on the way. This went a little quicker than we anticipated, but let's, I want to give everybody a chance. Let's take a 10-minute break and hopefully she'll be here by then.
Okay.
I'll call a 10-minute recess.
Okay. Be back online in 10 minutes.
Call this meeting back to order. We're now down to our last candidate. I open, let's take, we'll give you one place. What we'll do is we'll ask the same questions all the other candidates have. One question for each one of us. And then at the end, I'll give you whatever time you need for closing remarks or questions of us to go. Let's get the procedure. And then when you're done, we'll go into executive session. Everybody will be out, and then we'll come back into the executive session and pause to make an announcement. We'll bring you back, everybody back. All right, thank you for applying. And we'll start with a question. So, as you know, Bisbee's a small town, was born and raised in. But our citizens suspect our public officials to be available and accessible to them. How would you interact with the citizens and the media? And what would be your day-to-day interaction style, your style and how do you think best to interact with the citizens?
Well, first of all, hello, everybody. Well, let's see. First of all, it's really, through daily interactions, it's really hard to kind of separate if you're coming to going to go the safe way, knowing that this is a small town and plus we have a business that's downtown. It's kind of public. And so there'll definitely be just the casual interactions that you probably tend to avoid. However, I think I would like to structure when we have some interaction that maybe if it turns into something that might be a larger issue, I would ask that we schedule some time to take the issue further so I can hear more about it. Because I think in those casual settings, you only get part of what somebody's really wanting to hear. So I think it's really important that to give somebody some consideration of what you're doing is to continue to be friendly, but also to kind of take it and turn it into more of a formal interaction. Also, I would believe that the email, to use the city communications rather than my personal communications. I have a lot of activities going on in my life. So I'd like to keep things as separate as you can. And I know that's really difficult, again, in a small community to do. But I think it's really, really important. I have a lot of hats. I have a lot of places that I, I'm involved with lots of committees and the business and my job, which is pretty consuming. So I would like to keep it really clear, really clean, and distinct differences between how that would happen. I expect there will be a lot of communication. Ideally, I really believe in community forums. If there were opportunities for that to happen, I would like to do something quarterly to get If there were opportunities for that to happen, I'd like to do something quarterly to get the feedback from the board. That was, or some sort of way to get some sort of feedback in structured format. And that would be my ultimate comfort zone. Not that that's possible, but that would be something that I personally like and it would fit my particular style.
Right, thank you. Anna?
Welcome, Chris. My question for you is, what challenges and/or problems do you feel are most concerning currently in the city? And how has your experience prepared you for dealing with these issues? I think I have a lot of experience and I have a deep knowledge of a lot of the issues and challenges, especially after COVID. Given a small business downtown, I'll tell you something we feel pretty strongly right now is the impact that COVID's having on the economy here. I firsthand know what's going on in small businesses. It's pretty critical. And as we're going into what they're calling the fourth wave right now, I think as far as an immediate issue, an immediate situation, I think that that's a really, really big issue. As the numbers, I mean, this is a daily thing. It's changed from my answer from last week is probably different than my answer for this week, which because of the variant and what's happening just in today's numbers alone. And I think Coach Cheese just left its zone as being one of the only counties in the state that was in a moderate level. And we've just moved into the other. And for the Health Department Director, we're going to continue to move. That's going to be a trend that will keep going. So I believe that the COVID issues are really, really important and critical. I also believe infrastructure issues, again, I'm on Main Street and the street issues. I think some of you know, we've been very concerned, we've got sandbags in front of our business. And so I would like to see that dealt with. I think Bisbee's infrastructure across the board. We're an old city, we're historic. We need to preserve what we have that's the best while we're taking care of really important issues. This, there's just, there is a lot here. I mean, we've got a lot going on. So those would be the very top issues, but I think there's a lot under that as well. Everything from just the community as a whole, parking. My goodness gracious, and downtown parking and the issues associated with that. A lot of those are downtown issues. I think in Warren, just revitalization of Warren too, to make sure that we've got a vibrant Warren is really important.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ryan. What do you hope to accomplish as City Councilperson?
Um, that's a really great question. I think for me to even not pull my letter of intent to the last minute, I want, and I do, by the way, I think you guys have got a great pool. So I don't think, I think it's a great pool. So whoever gets this position. But I think for me in particular, what I mulled over a lot was, again, I think you've got a vantage point when you grow up here, where, you know, you do know about the mining history, you know about where things came from. When I moved back here in 1988, I took on the position as Bisbee Main Street Manager, getting a really deep level of what is going on in Bisbee economically. I had that position for a year and a half and transitioned that program into the city and into the Chamber of Commerce. Through that program, we worked with state architects and the Department of Commerce and had plans for the downtown. I know that under the city pretty well, based on those maps. Had a lot of renditions. We helped to do the matching grants that did the facade work that revitalized downtown. At that point, there were only 50% occupation in the businesses down there. So I've watched and seen it grow. I've been involved with either through family businesses or other businesses there for well over 30 years in the downtown business. I've lived in all sections of town. I grew up in San Jose. I've now lived in Warren. I've lived in Old Bisbee and I've had a business in Old Bisbee all this time. So I have a deep, deep knowledge of all the sections of town. I also, you know, raised nieces and nephews and, you know, know about the school system and went to school and know about all those completely different. But anyway, that I have a deep knowledge of all of that, care a lot about it. And I think I'm just very passionate. The historic preservation issues too, for me, are really big. And I get the conflict too. So I, and I like to come at things from a really win-win and listen to all sides.
Thank you. Johnny?
What do you see your role as councilperson?
I see the role of a councilperson is to listen to what's coming before them from the city manager, to support policy, to support oversight of the city, to listen to the individuals in the board and represent them. And that would be the micro level. At the macro level is to see and understand the issues of the entire city to the very best you can to represent them as the, for the largest constituents in the best of the whole community. So the decisions need to be weighed, taken very seriously, looked at all the issues. I think you need to delve into information that you're given and take it seriously and look at all the sides. I think it's less about what my opinion is, although I think my lens is really important to bring to it. But I think the more information that you get, the better you pull your decisions. So when votes come forward, that that's an in and out of that's well informed.
So, thank you. That's nice. Leslie?
Hello. So my question to you is similar to Anna's. What do you see as the biggest challenges Bisbee needs to get on it to? And do you have any preliminary ideas for addressing these challenges?
Yeah, I mean, well, I have, I think more than ideas, because I think things change all the time. I have a lot of my days, of course, I can go on and on. But I think, again, I think I'll take it from the lens, like as far as the COVID issues concern, my work is in health. And so my full-time job is there, I think, bringing in resources, leveraging resources where I see the issues emerging. I think that's something I'm really, really good at and I've got a lot of relationships all over the state. I'm on committees that have to do with housing. I know there's housing issues that are happening right now. I'm on the continuum of care committee. I work, we have a housing department. We provide housing industry for access individuals. There's, I can leverage like nobody's business. So I have, I've got all kinds of relationships, hitting all kinds of topics of issues. So whether it's other, I, my work is in community affairs and I work across county. So also leveraging relationships for the other communities. So looking to see what the successes were in other places as well. So if it's infrastructure, looking to see what successes and what similar towns are going on and try to bring those resources to the table and try to bring what I have and all of those things that I can leverage, bring them to the town. So as far as what I particularly can bring, I think that's one of my very big strengths. I get calls almost all day long asking for Sally, do you know this person Sally? Can you show me Sally? Do you know where the money is? And that's the other thing is I do know, and I'm involved with foundations and involved with understanding how money works, grants work, how funding, I review grants on a regular basis and manage grants. I manage a lot of grants and a lot of big budgets. So I love that answer. That was great. Thank you, Sally.
Thanks. Lou, good evening. Can you tell me what you think should be done with the council?
Oh, well, I have a list. I live one block away from it. So I was there the night she burned down. I mean, all night long, sitting right there sadly, brokenheartedly. You know, I've heard a lot of great suggestions. I actually, before I would say what my, I would have loved to see it historically preserved. That would have been my, my preference. I understand by looking at it that that's probably not a reality in a lot of ways. I know that I have a relationship with the director of the USDA. He's offered, they've talked, I don't know if you guys have all talked to Jeff, but he's talked about perhaps there's some resources available for looking at. And, but I would like to have something done there. I think it should be a multi-purpose building. I think that I would love to see it be multi-storied, although I'm hearing that's probably not a doable thing. But I would like to see some sort of multi-purpose situation occur. I don't know, leveraging the school district resources too somehow. I think that they've got old buildings, there's old things happening. If there's any way to talk and collaborate and share and do these kinds of things, that's really good. Again, the housing, have nonprofit offices. You know, there's all kinds of creative solutions to doing it. But I do think it'd be best served to possibly generate additional revenue by having renters in there and having some income generating occupants that would leverage the renovations or something. And if public-private partnerships are really now a really big thing, so I'm all about it. Bring it on.
Thank you.
In fact, you know, one last thing. I would love to see it replicate any kind of look that I have before. If there was any way to pull any of the historic preservation, I am very much into the historic preservation. If there was any way to retain or do that in the renovation in any way possible, that would be really beautiful.
All right, thank you. That's all from each one of us. But like I said, maybe what time you would like, a few minutes, any way to, if you have any observations or closing remarks and of course, any questions, if you have any questions to ask.
No, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to, to speak or answer the questions. I do think you guys have got a pretty cool of applicants. So, you know, I'm going to cheer on whoever is elected or brought into the position. So I think that's really great. The only other thing I would say is that one of the things that I don't think comes up very often in positions is related to the border and the border issues. And I like to say that, you know, I have a deep cross-border connections with the consulate and many of those kinds of things too. Some bipolar connections across the region, actually, already, you know. So again, for towns that are similar to ours, or have some commonalities with, it's bad issue as well. But it would be a pleasure to serve and it's also a pleasure to be here and to be of just support. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we'll be going into executive session and then when we come out, I want everybody back and then.
All right.
All right. All right. Everybody, just want to move on to agenda number two. This will be a discussion upon approval of a motion to go into executive session to discuss and consider the appointment by councilmember for the vacant four-two council position as authorized by ARS 38431.43. I propose a motion to go into executive session.
I second.
We have a motion, a second to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Close, aye. The ayes have it. We're going into executive session. Thank you, everybody. Hang in there.
Good to go.
I make the motion to come out of executive session. Second. We have a motion, a second to come out of executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Close, aye. There says the ayes have it. We're out of the executive session. This is a very, very long discussion, as you might have seen. These are the assets-grade candidates. And we've all would like to ask everyone to be one more question. So I will call you up, it's a simple yes or no. And we would appreciate your honest, your honest answer on that. We'll start in the same order. Now, when you come up. If appointed, would you commit to run for the two-year seat?
Yes.
Thank you. Larry?
Yes, I would also commit to run particularly.
Good, I'll have to ask it again. Thank you.
Yes, I would.
Okay. Jeff?
Yes.
All right.
I don't think I'd think of that. So I think I'm going to, I would possibly run, but I can't say at this moment.
Okay, thank you all. All right. As item number three, I will entertain a motion by anyone on the council. I move to point. Now, so we're, you go. As a member of the vacant four-two, as a member of the vacant four-two. Thank you. We have a motion by Frank, second by Lou, to appoint Mel as a council member for a vacant four-two position. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacaminho.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Mel.
Thank you.
We will take a five-minute.
You're going to need to adjourn your special session and then.
I was so happy to get over. Thank you all, really, honestly. This is, this is my first, first one of these in over eight years that I've done. And it's not a neighbor. All right. If it was easy, we would have been out of here hours. All right, I move to adjourn. All those members signify by saying aye. Aye. Close, aye. Ayes have it. We are adjourned. See you in about five.